Go right ahead.
Okay. Uh, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the select board meeting for January twenty six, twenty twenty one. I'll start with the governor's order pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelve twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law general laws, chapter thirty A, section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteen twenty twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Medfield Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that people who would like to listen or view the meeting while in progress may do so by following the instructions on the agenda and meeting notice. All votes subject to remote participation, therefore will be roll call votes. We remind everybody that everything is being recorded. And we always start with a moment of remembrance. And I guess this evening I was going to suggest that we focus on some of the Medfield people that have died recently. Al Manganello Junior was a huge presence in town for years with the with the Legion and unfortunately died this past week. Eric O'Brien was someone who had spent huge amounts of time working on the parks and wrecks in Medfield and ran the his business out of Medfield for for a long time. And then there were two young men who died as well, Ben Wang and Michael Conlon in their twenties both died very sadly, so. To have such young people die. So everybody, if we could just have a moment of remembrance of those people, please. Thank you. Our first appointment is with Jay Duncan, Townwide Master Planning Committee Chair to discuss the townwide master plan.
Just give me a few minutes. I believe the whole committee would like to become panelists, so just give me a few minutes to promote them.
They want to outnumber the select board, huh?
It looks like Sarah looks like I'm missing Jay.
Oh, boy.
I was just texting with him and he says it's. Give me a second.
I think the townwide master plan has one of the best logos I've ever seen. Cindy Green has a little bit of it showing on her screen.
I'm really sorry for the delay. Oh, Pete.
There you go. Jerry's got it up. When I put mine up, it's backwards. I don't I haven't gotten around to fixing that yet, Sarah.
Oh, well.
This drives me nuts. I I print out the agenda for this meeting ahead of time. And if I do it the day ahead of time, it's guaranteed it will flee from my desk. So I have it on my screen. It's just that it's like every time I try to get ahead of myself, I pay the price.
My my problem, Gus, is that the agenda changes and then I'm on working off of the wrong one.
Yeah, but but that's the thing that that Christine, Mike and I have when you're the chairman. So that's it's that's intentional. This is totally unintentional here.
I wondered about that. It's good to finally know.
I'm sorry. So Jay, oh, there he is. Okay.
Here. Sorry, my phone, for some reason, my computer will not connect me. So as long as you guys can see and hear me, we'll use this.
Hello.
So if you're ready to go, Jay, we're ready to hear from you.
Sure. Okay, yeah, sorry. So this is a meeting to talk about our the end of our process. I'll just get a quick overview. We started this about, I think about seventeen months ago or so. We got delayed a little bit by COVID. But we we took a little break and I think we we talked to you about that. Everybody agreed that was a good thing to do, but we kept going after that. We got, I think what we feel was pretty significant amount of public input. We had three, three different forums. The first one had the most participation, but we still had about, we had almost hundred and fifty, I think, on the first, then we had about a hundred, and then the last one we had less. But I think that that last one was also focused on. You know, it was a little, it was it was focused on the results. So maybe that wasn't as exciting as getting giving the input. But we also had a significant amount of online participation. We had almost five hundred people take the survey. We had thirty or so interviews with leadership throughout the town. Different departments and such. We talked to high school students. We talked to, we had folks at the library. Talked to the the children's librarian and the teen librarian. We worked with youth on on their input into it. We had about fourteen meetings of ourselves and then we had, you know, other outreach. We had Medfield Day participation. So we felt it was a pretty, pretty good, pretty involved process. It's always, you know, could always expect more, but you know, I mean, I think our, if we look at the engagement we had statistically, we thought was pretty good in terms of the feedback. And I think it mirrored a lot of the feedback that I think, you know, you have gotten in the process that you went through. As I had said last time, we did take the town goals, the selectmen goals into into account. They're they're included in the plan. They're reflected in the plan. They're also, again, I think a lot of them are are similar in terms of what we heard from people. To give you a quick overview. Top favorite features, your sense of community, open space and natural resources, the town center, schools and historic character of Medfield. Least features, traffic, as you might imagine, and road safety, taxes, lack of pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure and lack of public transportation. Similarly, you know, to that is what's missing pedestrian bike infrastructure, recreation facilities and opportunities, public transportation. Downtown improvements and the diversity of the tax base. Issues for the future that respondents found most most appropriate was this state hospital reuse was a big issue, expanding the tax base. Looking at more renewable renewable energy resources and sustainability. Downtown improvements again, traffic, and then provision of services and utilities impacts on the impacts of that on the population. And then quickly summarize what one thing people would do to improve Medfield. And we got a few things reuse of the state hospital again, tax base, include provide public transportation. Again, the downtown, improving that pedestrian experience, community center slash recreation center, more opportunities to socialize, although a little more challenging these days. And then hang out for teens, which is another thing that's a little bit challenging, obviously, these days. And we don't want to encourage right now, but for the future, you know, that's just a sim still a stumbling block, I'll say, you know, and I think eventually we'll get back to, and these things will all be appropriate, I think everybody felt. When we looked at all the the goals, we developed the goals. You know, that came out of this process. We have some general ones, but then there are subcategories. I won't go into all the subcategories, but and these are in no particular order, honor Medfield's town character, make getting around town safe and pleasant, encourage economic activity, provide a range of housing options, help provide public facilities and service that meet the needs of the residents, support the reuse of the state hospitals, support health and wellness of residents, and improve governance, and plan for future resilience. And I think, you know, if we compare those also to your, you know, your goals, I think we'll, we can agree that, you know, they're very similar or they they embody. You know, a lot of the same things that we heard in the process. So, you know, two fairly distinct processes, you know, similar impact or input. Although I'm sure a lot of the same people participated in a ball. So that's a that's a quick summary of the plan. We do have, I don't know if any had a chance to look at it. I know how I know. He has, obviously. But we, I think we feel pretty, pretty positive about the experience. I think the challenge next and and maybe I think maybe something people can debate is how much detail you did you we went into or what you can really go into in the plan. Now, the plan is is the plan, and then there are different instruments that implement. For example, you know, any zoning changes certainly would have to be undertaken in a different process. There are a lot of, you know, legal or or government and governance issues that would be, you know, handled by the different departments in the Borough of Selectment and the town administrator. There would be follow-on studies, for example. If we wanted to, we did talk about different areas that we thought improvements to access from an access standpoint, maybe pedestrian and bike could could take place. But the next step might be a safe routes to school or an access study that, you know, we didn't have the the scope or or the budget to do, but that would be something that, you know, this this the study might point in that direction to say, let's look at these areas because they make sense to connect them. But, you know, we wouldn't have undertaken that in this process. So there's there's some definitely follow-up steps. Absolut- obviously. What we tried to do and we went through in our implementation plan was we tried to identify not necessarily by priority, but maybe ease of implementation. So what we call maybe low low-hang fruit, and we have a, you know, a graphic of an apple or something, for example. So it's an easy, it's an easy thing to implement. You know, it might not take a lot of time or effort or any new, you know, governments, regulatory or funding, or it might take funding that's already in place or what have you. It's kind of explained and and we designated and and kind of call it out in in the in the implementation plan as such. So we also, you know, have different categories of sustainability. We have, you know, all kinds of things that we tried to tie graphically to to the goals and the expectations that we heard from, you know, the public process, from the the different heads of the departments and things like that. So as you know, we had a pretty diverse group. We had pretty good participation. Obviously, everybody couldn't make it to every meeting. But we did, we did have a really good core group that was always there. And we had, you know, members of the of the administration who participated and, you know, provided guidance and made things a little bit easier in terms of, you know, the different pieces of it, like the, for example, the existing conditions. Our consultant was, we worked pretty hard, I think. I think we got our our money's worth. They were very responsive. We're very happy with the selection. And I think we ended up with a with a great product as a result. I guess that that's the general overview. I mean, I can go into, I don't know, every page, but I can probably help help answer questions. We did have, I mean, I can get to you at some point and maybe even go through a little bit today. But I did prepare a little bit of a summary in response to some of the the issues in the charter. You know, they are, we do point to different sections of the report where we cover that. I mean, I will go back to something that was raised last time, you know, the new rec center, you know, that there was, there was just direction that we should, you know, kind of address that issue. But I will, you know, I'll, I'll say again that 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 was a separate process, which is already is already going on. And that's the the mandate of that that group. So that's not something, you know, something we certainly supported and is supported by the plan. It's not something that we solved in this in this plan. And, you know, that is, you know, under being undertaken a different process. So there's an example where we did, you know, point to something else, some other process to address that concern and that need. So I guess I'll open it up. Questions, comments.
Gus, do you want to start off?
Sure, I'll start. I'm going to want to come in at the end and have a discussion around the process going forward. But sure, let me start and then we kind of have to have, I think, a joint discussion of where this where this goes from here. First, Jay, given that I'm the one who yanked your chain in the last time you came around the town goals, I appreciate that they did show up there. And beyond just simply having them show up where you put them in, I appreciated that in major at the major goal areas, you tied back into those goals. I have one administrative point. You left one of the town goals out, and so you need to go back in and correct the plan for that. And that may actually mean that there are some other linkages. I think your comment about the fact that the things that you learned from the goal-setting process that you went through fundamentally were compatible with the goals that the selectmen set a couple of years back. A, I'm glad to hear that. B, I'm not surprised because the original draft of the selectmen's goals really reflected about twenty years' worth of inputs on what people said was important. The whole intent of that goal of those goals was to put them on paper, create a forum where in retrospect, I think you already know this, I wish the townwide master plan had started from that point. And I'm surprised the consultants you brought on board didn't know enough to have you go to what goals were there, but it's water under the bridge. Unfortunately, whether whether we were shooting at the same target or not, or you hit the same target, so it doesn't matter. So that that was one point I was I was glad to see, but I would like that fifth thing to be addressed. I let me start with a broad question. Did you guys pick, create a picture of Medfield twenty years from now? In other words, in in thinking about this master plan. Did you have a picture of what Medfield, you, you know, you were a stake in the ground to plan against for what Medfield twenty forty is going to look like in terms of population, demographics, that can, you know, tax base mix, anything that kind of gave that to you?
I think we probably asked people what they, I think it was more, we asked people when we went through the public process, what they envisioned Medfield to be and what they wanted it to be. I mean, I think we didn't do, you know, any cohort projections or or population projections. We did, we did rely on, you know, the town departments to provide any planning that they had done to help guide the process and understand. You know, maybe improvements that would would connect with and link to the work that we were doing. So so I guess that's how I'd answer it. But, you know, I mean, I think we didn't, we looked to the people and the input we had to kind of identify what they wanted to see Medfield evolve to. But, you know, it sometimes those things don't mesh. If you wanted, if they said, we want a a silly example, but we want, you know, ninety percent of our tax base to be commercial. That would be, okay, great, but that's not, that's not where we're going to be, or that's not what we're going to do. That would that would dramatically change the, you know, the town. We may not be able to even do that. We don't have enough property to do that. But it would be an interesting thing to hear that. Of course, we didn't hear that. That's not what people wanted. So so I guess that was how how I would answer.
Yeah, okay. So my my question was slightly different, which is not what do people want. It was more a projection of what we think would happen. And let me just to put that in the context, not just ask the question for the sake of asking it. Right now, Medfield's sitting at about thirteen thousand. If we redevelop the state hospital, this is my calculus, using really crude numbers. I'm guessing we pick up a thousand residents, and so we're at fourteen thousand. And the question is, I thought about this townwide master plan, painting a picture for the next twenty years. On one hand, your plan definitely calls out people saying, gee, we want to maintain the character of the town. We want the small-town feel. We want a lot more open space. We won't want too much traffic, but we want a lot more economic activity. And then so there's these cross, there's these contradictory wants. And in my head, where I've been asking is to say, well, twenty years from now, is Medfield a twenty thousand person town that looks more like Westwood or Needham or Newton, something like that? Or is Medfield deliberately still a fifteen thousand person town? And I and I actually think that's a decision for the town to make. That's not a, that's not just, well, whatever happens, happens. But based on that fundamental planning position, then when you start talking about building housing and you start talking about both, you know, on one hand, figuring out how to improve taxes, but on the other hand, how to make it affordable, there's there's consequences that fall out of that. So what's behind my question is, how did you take into account any of those kinds of considerations?
Well, I think we can do it, you know, based on zoning right now and housing, the lot sizes and things like that, we could do a projection to say this is what Medfield is going to be. And I don't know if Sarah or or anybody's done that. That could change, you know, and and there's only so much land, and if that doesn't change, we know what it's going to be. Now, if we do more, you know, affordable housing on smaller lots and more of that kind of development, certainly that could change. But I I can't see that Medfield is good, would change significantly. And it would have to be, you know, that those those instruments of development would have to be changed significantly to for it to be something different than, you know, a community that's very, very similar to what it is today. I guess that would be my.
So where that kicks in is for me is when I read the recommendations on housing about new housing, more diverse housing, being able to meet different, that feels like more housing. And if the answer is yes, it's more housing, and it's all at the state hospital, then I understand it. If it the answer is, well, it's a state hospital, and then it's more, I'm saying where, what kind? So it's a comment about, it was a question about how to view the recommendations you're making and whether they're grounded in kind of a planning scenario or not.
Well, and I I think it some of it is to be determined by. I mean, our recommendation, and you were right, there was, when there's a, you know, we want better access, but we don't want more traffic. We want, you know, better tax base, but we don't want more commercial development. We want, you know, more more access here, but, you know, there was, there's, you know, we want diverse, more diversity, but we don't want more more house. You know, I mean, I think there's a lot of things that, you know, jumped right out of us and you, you, you know, you're bringing them up to the same thing that that on one hand, you want this, you want the good, but you don't want the bad. Or you don't, you don't want the the things that come with those things that you want. So that's the challenge. So the balance is, you know, where where where's the line? You know, if you want, if you want more, and and, you know, this was, this was mentioned before, tax neutral or whatever. So you, I mean, you or or tax or service. What positive, right? Well, that, well, well, you can't, you, you know, you can't necessarily control that. If somebody buys a house, you can't say, well, you you can't, you can't bring in more than one kid. If they have seventeen kids, they're coming in.
But so, yeah, unless you go down the direction of senior housing and group housing and assisted living, that kind of stuff.
But also, you know, I mean, you can control that if you have a, you know, this is this affordable housing has to have a certain population, the law allows for that, that's fine. But, you know, so it's a little bit fuzzy, right? I mean, I think we know what. We we have a plan and a recommendation of the type of development that we that the the plan recommends the community lean towards or but, but again, the 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 tool and the of implementation is the zoning. If you don't change the zoning, everything will develop as the market allows. If you change, make adjustments, there are impacts to that. And we're fairly clear on where, you know, we, the plan would like to see, you know, changes, but they're not, they're not dramatically, you know, they're not dramatic. I think they're they're targeted, but that's still to be determined where, how, you know, and what. But certainly, we do want a diverse community. We want different types of people. We want to be able to support different diversity within the town, but not change it dramatically.
Incidentally, one of the, one of the things that, not that I even know the right answer to all these, but one of the things I appreciated that you all did was there's a number of zoning questions that you asked, some of which didn't cross my mind. I know the one about the the residents over stores. I was, I was there for that public meeting, and I was thinking of like Larkins and the people upstairs, and I I didn't even realize it was an issue. So the zoning questions is one of the things that's in the plan that I did like, that I think was, I don't know what the right answers are, but I like the questions in the issues that you raised. So that that happens to be one thing that I I like about the plan. So let me give you a broad, a broad reaction that kind of explains why I started with the question I did. My first reaction when I started going through the plan is, man, there's a heck of a lot of boilerplate here. You know, I'm getting, I'm getting statistics back and I'm getting told what a master plan is and what a process is. So given my background as as a project management consultant, I want the plan. I don't want the the fluff. As I got into it, though, I said, well, but I'm not the only one that reads this plan. It actually might be easier for people in the public to read, pull the plan out and have this stuff explained. So I can tell you, my first reaction was, there's a heck of a lot of boilerplate here. And then I backed off on that because perhaps that boilerplate makes this more publicly accessible. So that was the first reaction. My second reaction, and I'm not sure which of two reactions I should rely on. My first reaction was, gosh, there's a lot in here that's talking about stuff we're already doing that's saying, yeah, keep doing it. So I could feel good about that and just say, well, this is a twenty-year, you know, master plan for the town. But what the main message of this plan is, is you guys are already doing a whole bunch of stuff that's really the stuff we think you should do. Keep up the good work. The alternative reaction is it's too focused on the present and not focused enough going out ten or twenty years. And the piece that made me put a little more weight on that possible interpretation is when I went through the detailed actions, you know, at the back part of the plan where there's priorities, one, twos, and threes.
Yeah.
There's not very many threes. Anything that we're talking about here are ones and twos, and there's a couple of threes. But in many ways, what we're talking about is what we're doing in the next one to five years. In fact, because I think I didn't count them, but I think there's more ones. And then there's some things that are presumably the five to ten-year thing. So my reaction was, it's awfully focused on the present, which if we have a straight-line trajectory for twenty years, that will work. So that's an observation.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay. The other, the other big thing, and again, this is because these are a lot, there are lots of ideas and actions in this plan. And there's no actual funding or labor estimates. And I'm not, I'm not looking for detailed firm estimates, but we don't really have any kind of numbers that as you take a look at thirty-five things that we say we want to do. There's nothing that grounds you in what would we have to, how how discriminating would we need to be about doing all these things or doing a couple of these things or doing some things, not in the next five years, but five years out? So I I found that that column talks about where the funding might come from, and the only mostly it was, you know, potential grant sources. But there's no sense of whether these things are going to cost a lot of money, a little money, what we're actually talking about. I think that actually would be helpful to have in a plan like this, recognizing they're only just, you know, they're 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 top-level estimates. They're not firm, detailed estimates.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point. I mean, we, we, you know, it's so hard. We're not, none of the folks, I mean, if it was something like a new sewer main and it was in the capital plan, you know, that's something that we could pull from. But many of these things were not, we weren't really set up to to come up with capital costs. I think one of the things that we talked about is, is, you know, what, as you talk about what happens next, is that maybe we have a continuing process that that builds on this where we do, you know, identify, okay, here's the, here's the priorities. We work with, you know, a capital planning committee and others to say, you know, if we had, you know, well, I don't even know if we have, if have this much money, but but maybe go to the next level and say, if this, this is a, maybe it's more general, but, you know, heavy investment, light investment, small investment, no investment, or something like that. And we and we we develop a, you know, a further detailed implementation plan in coordination with the town. And then, you know, you maybe coordinate with the capital planning committee and get that in that process. You know, I'm not sure, but we did float some ideas and had some some thoughts about, you know, what happens after this. But as a part of this process, you know, that there, there's so many and so so involved that, you know, we couldn't really come up with. And and as soon as you came up with those estimates, they'd be, you know, they'd be out of whack anyway. They wouldn't be accurate. So that's why we. So that's why we just kind of talked about the source. Uh, and there might be different processes for each depending on what it is. And you'd have to come up with, you know, obviously a process and a, and a bid and things like that. So.
That, let's defer that just a little bit. I, I have just a couple of other questions that I'll turn it over to you, Mike. The one thing that caught me as an idea that I just didn't have any sense of where it was, where it arose from was the intergenerational. Facility, that community center. Where did that come, where did that come from?
From, I mean, we came up with that from the input, from the public. I mean, that's, that's, that's where most of these things or some of these things came up with that. That's definitely one.
So, cause I know we've talked, we've had conversations about if there's a way to find synergy. Between the COA and some of their expansion plans and perhaps Parks and Rec. And so I can start to see how we would be pulling that sort of a thing together. I have a really hard time picturing that the kids in town are wishing there could be a community center that they could spend a lot of time. With seniors at. So the, that intergenerational piece. I was, I was intrigued by, it's just, I had a hard time picturing that that was a serious.
Yeah. Well, I think, uh, I mean, I guess, uh, certainly it was something that came out, um, you know. I think that you, you might be surprised by the, um, you know, what, what kids want to learn from their elders and how elders want to contribute to, to the youth. The generation. I don't know if that's something that, you know, certainly becomes our top priority, but it's certainly something that folks, uh. You know, thought was, would be interesting and, and would add to the, to the community. It's, it's kind of a unique idea. Whether, you know, whether you like it or not, um, that it's, it's something unconventional. You wouldn't think.
Right. It was.
Certainly they can all contribute, they can all benefit from each other, I think. But again, that's, you know, that's, we didn't make it up.
Okay. Last, no, I was just trying to understand it because it, I only have three reliable data points. In terms of what you think. And, uh, they I can talk with on a daily basis and I would be surprised if any one of them was looking to, for that. But so those, those are my data points. Uh, the last thing I want to do is I want to go back to the charter. There were some specific issues that we asked you to address and I just want to make sure. Um, so the, the first one was the location of the Parks and Rec building. You already talked about not addressed. Commercial development and zoning. Now you've addressed. You know, the, the, the desire to expand commercial. Did you all come to any conclusion? I think part of the, part of this for us. Was insight into any areas that you think we should be looking harder at. To expand commercial development from a, you know, specific site. Did you all come up with any insights or views on that?
Well, I mean, I, what I, what I wrote in response to that is, um. Uh, we recommend the next step be zoning be reviewed and revised to make it align with all the master planning goals as a separate effort. We also, that's a separate study be undertaken to determine current projected demands in the marketplace. Uh, the plan recommends that new commercial development is guided. So it's balanced, it's a, has a balanced impact on public facilities and services so that preserves existing open space and so. Complements neighborhood character. The plan also recommends that design review be considered and, um, we talk about it in. Goal one, objective one dash four, and then goal three point one. Um, so, uh, you know, we didn't. We, I mean, obviously it depends on what the market, uh, will bear and, and what the interest is from developers and, and businesses. So. You know, sometimes a, a marketing study, I've been involved in them before. Uh, where a marketing development study is done, uh, and either RFPs developed. Where developers come in, you know, and look at the town and say, there's an interest and we've done a stu, a study and we think this is. You know, this is what would work in Mel, Medfield and we're willing to invest in it. So, um, I'm sure you're familiar with it. So we're recommending that really that, that type of process, um, you know, in, in. In coordination with, um, you know, we talk about in the, in the, in the implementation goals. How we responded to that specific question.
Okay.
Jay, can I chime in on that?
Yeah.
Jerry Potts. One of the, one of the big items, um, and it came through time and time again, was the state hospital. And so with the development committee going to market to be able to assess. That was the big elephant in the room because when we talk about a market survey, one of the best ways to get a market survey is actually going to the market and seeing if they will pay. So we have, we know in the master plan for the state hospital, we have more commercial space. In that plan than we could probably use in the next 10 years. If we get no appetite to fill it. We've got a problem, you know, because that is the easiest, most accessible, zoned, ready to go. And so I, I kind of look at the state hospital being so prominently factored in, in every workshop we had. Then I think the entire town is waiting to see. How that responds for housing, how it responds for the makeup of that. Real life, you know, not theoretical market study. We've been looking for four years at this and we're now finally going to market and saying, hey. You interested? And that's going to be our best indication. And so I think there were three projects that. Are real time that are impacting that were, when we looked at the, at the master plan impacted us. One was the school. Second was the rec center and third was the state hospital. And those three projects alone will dictate. Our tax base, our spending, our priorities, and they're happening now, right? Especially the school and the state hospitals. So. I do think, you know, what we were trying to put in, and the reason you see more specificity within one to three years. Is we have more known there. And then depending if we get a great proposal for the state hospital that meets lots of our needs. That takes a lot of pressure off of these other, you know, demands. If we, if we get a third of the capacity we need for commercial space at the state hospital, we're in pretty good shape. But if it's none, and it was all theoretical, and in fact, they want large mansions up there. We're going to have to rethink everything. So I think that, that was really the big thing that I think all the town is waiting for. And, and hopefully we'll get some good indications on that. I will say the overall plan, the framework for it is still consistent with the master plan for the state hospital. I mean, we've heard the same things over and over again, but now we're finally going to be able to get some real. Data on whether or not there's an appetite for what we hope it will be, which is a nice balanced, you know, perfect housing, perfect commercial, open space. And if it comes back with a resounding no way, then we're going to have to go back, you know, with more specificity on some other areas. So.
Okay. Uh, next to down residential development, you addressed the 40B and in the small A affordable housing, I think was addressed. The town land, um. The, the one question I had on that one is there was one very specific issue there. Around the maintenance responsibilities for land. Now you made a recommendation. Which I actually was surprised to see, but happy to see, which was. This goal of trying to find ways to connect open space and, uh. For anybody who's familiar with the White Mountains in New Hampshire, the Appalachian Mountain Club, or if you're a little farther north. The Randolph Mountain Club for several years, I've said, we should have a Medfield Mountain Club. Not because we have mountains, but because we have open space and the stewardship of trails and helping people figure out how to take advantage of. Open space would be a good thing. One of the issues we brought up though, was the issue around kind of, you know. Uh, clarifying responsibilities for maintaining our open space. Cause we have open space. But it's not maintained, so it becomes jungle space and effectively it's locked up land that almost nobody can use. Because first off, over time, they don't even know it's open space that they could use. But as a practical matter, they can't get through. Did you deal with any of those kinds of issues?
We didn't look at, um. No, no, I'm not really maintenance because that, that's, that goes down into too much granularity. Um, I mean, that's.
Although it does have to do with town, town, how the town operates under governance and things like that. How do we do our job? That, that, that's a place that's really a gap, but.
Yeah.
You did, okay. Um, I, I thought the, uh, op, options for travel in town were good, were addressed and the town infrastructure. Uh, felt to me like you punted a little bit, but I, I won't hammer you on that one, which was just kind of say, well. Water and sewer has, I mean, you have Bill Harvey on the committee here, so it's okay. But, you know, basically water and sewer has got to figure out what the infrastructure is and how that can fit with development. That's. That's exactly what we do anytime we have development.
Well, and that's tied with zoning as well. So I mean, if that, you know, and, and. You know, your ability to develop the land based on what's outserved and things.
Okay. So I, I could go on for probably hours with other specific questions because I did take time with this, but I'm going to cut it here and toss it over to Mike.
Oh, I heard you, you liked two things. Is it more? Two things, Eric.
Uh, well, so I like, I like the connection. No, no, there were more. Yeah, there were more. I, I actually, you weren't, you weren't listening, Jay. I, I, I liked, I liked the incorporation of the town goals. I liked the, um. Now you, now you've got me all, I like, I like the connecting of the, of the. Different locations. I liked, just as, as a technical matter, I thought the zoning. Changes were a good thing. Um. The, the format's easy to read. I, I think it's a, I think it's a very large document, so it feels to me bulky, a little bit kitchen sink. Kind of document. On the other hand, as I said, as I, as I thought more about it, I also realized that format might make it more accessible for. Just members of the public. So I'll, I, I, I'll say I didn't need that, but I actually can see how the format could be useful.
All right, great. Thank you. Very appreciate that input.
Oh, you're like.
Am I up?
You are.
All right. Thank you, Gus. Um, and thank you, Jay, and everybody else on the committee. I don't think I have as many questions or comments as, as Gus does. Um, my first question is, is what are you looking for from us? On this plan? I think you've already gotten what Gus is going to give you, but. What, what, what are you hoping to get out of this? And what is the next step? After this meeting tonight?
I, I think we're looking for, um. An adoption or a, an approval or a, you know, sign off thing, you know. I think that's where we're looking for. Uh, maybe there might be a, a vote or something after. If that, is that, am I correct, Sarah? Christine?
The other thing that I would suggest is that, uh, we need an implementation committee to, to monitor this going forward and to, to try to implement.
Yeah, Pete, uh, Pete, I'm, I'm not, my head is not there. I assume this was a first vetting. You may recall back in the November meeting, Pete, I said. You need to have this committee come in and have this plan vetted. Uh, so I don't think, I would, I would prefer not to vote to approve this because if I, if that's, we're going to vote today, I'm not prepared to approve it. Um, for. Specific reasons that I don't think this is the plan that we need, but I, I went into this assuming that this was a vetting discussion, not a vote.
I'm, Jerry Potts again, um, I, you know, I think one of the things that we're hoping will come out of it, that all of the decisions that are floating around town right now. That every committee and every, every group that is using and making decisions. Will adopt whatever is finally decided on as the framework to start with when those plans are being put in place. So as projects come through. It's laid out what the goals are, what we agree is a town we want. Those become sort of the guardrails on the framework that's applied. When projects are decided. So we're not starting from ground zero with another survey to the town, asking what they want, because that's the ninth one we've done. This gives us, if we do it correctly, a, a good framework that. You know, sustainability, open space, you know, how does it fit in with, with all the things that are in the plan? Um, that those actually have some teeth in it when we're making decisions on projects that come up. So I, I think that's really where the document, it, it doesn't try to answer everything, but it tries to take the many fine committees and projects in town. And sort of air traffic control and prioritize and put guardrails and, and, and put a framework that is consistent that we're not making decisions that are sort of outside of what the town has said that they care about.
So Jerry, that, that was precisely why we set it, we set up town goals a few years ago that, you know, didn't, didn't. They didn't really drive your initial discussions. I think they drove it toward the end, but it's a specific, I, I agree with your point. If we're going to have a plan. We ought to actually follow the plan. But because there's so many actions that are in this plan, not all of, not all of these actions, I'm, I'm not on board with all of them. And my guess is that others might not be. Uh, so my interest here is to get this thing focused and buttoned down so it can be used for exactly what you're saying you'd like to use it for.
So I spent, um, the past couple of weeks actually pu, um, putting all of those, um. Recommendations, strategies into an Excel spreadsheet, which I just finished the other night and, um. I made another column that talks about, um, you know, what's in motion, uh, what status updates are, so we can have the interim check-ins. With the boards and committees and, and with the department heads that we're working with.
Yeah, I don't think that's good enough there. But let's talk about that at the end of this conversation, not, not now. Bill, has your, Harvey, did you have something?
I think, um, I think that the report, it does, it tries to, um. Target some specificity because things have been called out. Um, but I think to, to the extent of which the, 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 the public was polled as well as people within the government were polled. I think that whether it's the existing projects that have been mentioned in this. Or one that i- is yet to, to, to come forward in, in the next couple of years. I think that. At a minimum, you could use this plan as a value set. To see. You know, to refer to, you know. Polling that was done in recent memory and the value set of the town and the people who live here, so that when. A project comes up or a project that's moving through a process, it is, you know, it's a reference point. Of, of, you know, of John Q. Public, really.
Yeah, but, but a master plan, Bill, can't be a pink puppy unicorn plan. And I mean, right, when you just ask, when you just ask people what they want, they'll tell you what they want. And you'll get answers like the one we're talking about here.
Most of them are true though. You can't, you can't dispute that what people want. That they didn't say it. So I think it has to be recognized that people do have a voice. Now, how they get, you know, is there money for it or is it? You know, much farther askew from where the current town is. That's, and that's, that's, you know, you're going to find things that end up on the cutting floor. But there is a core here of, of what the people want. And I think that that, that will help in existing projects and new projects as they're prioritized, both on a fiscal basis. And a chronological basis.
Well, I don't, I, I. I, I think it doesn't do any good to have a plan that's just what people want. That's an unconstrained picture. I think. We do, we are able to make some insights into what we can and can't do. Uh, and I don't, I'm not trying to say we'll never do it. I'm saying there are some ideas in here and there are some contradictory ideas in what people want in here. And I think we actually do have the ability to reconcile some of those rather than letting everybody. Go off in contradictory directions in their expectations. And then suddenly the cutting room floor is behind the curtain. When something that somebody thought was going to happen five years down the road doesn't happen. I'm trying to.
Well, it should be.
Trying to get precision and focus here.
Yeah, it, there should be things that are contradictory because. I mean, that's what, that's what the public discourse really is, is about, is that. Some things will be contradictory and, you know, as, as a population and as a town, we, we make those decisions together.
But the plan should not be contradictory, Bill.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, is this, is this all counting on my time? Is this all coming off my time? Mike, you can have as much time as you want.
Right.
So, so can I, because Mike, can I, you referenced, can I get 30 seconds of your time?
Yes, I yield 30 seconds of the gentleman from Cosway Street.
Uh, uh, thank you.
Go on mute.
You know, I guess, Gus, I know you're saying contradictory. To me, the one that consistently is contradictory is we want all this stuff and we're not willing to pay for it. Beyond that, what else is contradictory? I mean, I, you know, I think that's to some degree, that's where we're limited resources. And again, without a, you know, the, certainly in the, in the financial picture we're in, but there are some things that are very clear and very consistent. When you mentioned earlier about going to 20,000, I don't think anyone wants Medfield at 20,000 people. So I think, you know, if you look at 13 to 15,000, you know, given the resources we have, I think consistently people are saying that. Now, if we agree with that. What are the constraints financially? If we don't increase commercial space, that's a good, healthy discussion to have, but we have. Clearly said, we don't want this to be double the size, right? And that's come through and everything. So I, I think there are. How we get there, I totally agree with you that, that. You know, it's a lot harder when you don't put a price tag on it, but as we get more clarity on things, again, like. You know, the, the, um, state hospital and what revenue could potentially come through there and what the costs are going to be. I think that's the big element that has to have some clarity before we can make other decisions, but.
And everything we do in the future is going to have an impact analysis associated with it to understand what those pros and cons and. Uh, are before the done, but this kind of, you know, provides some framework for, for where to go.
So can I, I yield to the gentleman from Causeway Street.
Thank you, thank you. And I, I, I don't have a lot of specific, um, comments on it. Because I kind of wanted to have this discussion first, and so I knew what I was looking for. And I did read through it and, and I think I noted some of the same things Gus did. I, I don't think I had it as much of an issue with them as he did. I mean, I think. When I think about this exercise in the plan, I mean, this is a master plan being adopted in a democracy. Um, and the constituents of that democracy are going to change over the course of the 20 year period. You know, this is not a, this is not a totalitarian state. This is not a. Corporation where the board of directors has to adopt a five-year capital plan and we're going to build these three factories in five years and the rest of it. And so. I do see the plan as, as somewhat aspirational. Um, and it's aspirational in the context that we're in. And we are not here with. 15,000 virgin acres and let's build a. 15,000 virgin acres and let's build a community and decide what we're going to do like it's, it's SimCity or something like that, right? It's, it's, you know, this is a town that's here. We are resource constrained, we're space constrained, we're constrained by the overall demographics. And the reality is, even if we wanted to get to 20,000 people, I, I think we'd have to add a lot more houses than people think we would to get there. Because the reality is, you know, we've added a lot of houses in the town since 1980. We have not added a lot of people. And so if you look at our census number, despite the, the, I would say, the anecdotal consensus that the town is growing rapidly and it's becoming overcrowded and overpopulated, it's not borne out by the data and it's not borne out by the evidence. And that's simply because, you know, people have smaller families. And so in the same house that's here in 2020, there's likely fewer people living in it than there was in 1980. And so, you know, we have 4,500 housing units now. I think even in the wildest imaginings of people who would like the most development, we're not adding another 4,500, right? We're probably talking about adding, even at the state hospital, less than an increase of 10%. And what happens demographically to our town, what happens in those 4,500 units has a lot more of an effect on it than on whatever additional housing is built. And, and I think that, that fact, which I think is just a fact of, of demographics, and we do not control those demographic trends, they are everywhere in the developed world. And we're a little farther behind some countries in that, but we're catching up rapidly in, in having a population that is aging. And so a lot of the goals that are in here match up with the demographic trends that are going to be having a much bigger impact on this town than a lot of other decisions that we make. And so I do think when we put together a plan like this, we, we have to recognize that we're going to be constrained. Events are going to happen that are going to change it, but it does provide some overall direction and provide some flexibility. There are contradictory goals, but there are events that can occur that can make one of those contradictory goals more palatable and more feasible than others, right? I mean, if, if some one large company decides to come in and bid on the state hospital and say, we've decided we need to have space that's out in the middle of, you know, not in the middle of nowhere, but, but not, you know, crushed into Kendall Square or crushed into the Seaport or what have you. That changes a lot of stuff, right? That changes what we're going to do there. It changes what we're going to do in other places. The, the same is true with, with any number of changes in, in state or federal policy that could impact it. So I, I'm not looking for, I, I get Gus's point because I, I share his aversion to the purely aspirational. And I do think coming out of this, there ought to be a handful of things that we are looking to actually do i- in the near term. But, but I see it much more as here's an overall guide, here's what we'd like to accomplish, here's what people value about the town. And so when we're implementing these things and looking at things, that's a, a guidepost, right? It, it's, it's not a dictate. It's not a checklist. And I don't think we look back at it 20 years from now. And if, if there's 75 recommendations and if we implemented 68 of them, we did great, right? Or two, we failed. I think overall, did we directionally preserve what people love about the town and, and improve the areas that need improvement kind of within that overall guidance? So I, I, I don't, I don't think we need to have a mandate or have an automatic implementation program. And I don't think we should resist goals or objectives in the plan that are not immediately financially feasible. Because the reality is, if that's the standard, there's none of them are immediately financially feasible, right? We are struggling to have fire trucks and police cars now, right? So, I mean, we, we have to get over that hump first before we start talking about additional things. But I think for, just to give an example for a hobby horse of mine, which is sidewalks, right? So we've identified this. I, I think it's a big deal. I think it's a great quality of life issue. It's something that people value. And so that gives some direction to those of us in capital planning and those of us who are working on it. How do we put together a plan for the improvement of sidewalks? We're probably not going to build every sidewalk that people like. But if that's something that people really value and has an impact on a lot of other things, maybe that's something we try to plan for and, and either fund separately, as we did sort of the building stabilization fund, or otherwise prioritize that among things that we can do. And that, then again, that's something that has to be planned for and paid for separately from our current revenues. We do not have money in the budget. We are not going to have money in the budget anytime in the near future, given our current fiscal circumstances and our current commitments to build a lot of sidewalks, right? But there's other ways to do it, right? There's a combination of, of public money and betterment funds. There's a lot of way, and if that's a priority, that can be a focus and that's something that can actually be done, right? That would achieve one of the general objectives of the master plan. And again, it's a hobby horse of mine, so I, I mentioned it, but I think that's an example of something that's not going to be major. It's not going to be 60 miles of sidewalks. It's not going to be expanding all of our roads to have a bike lane on every road. But maybe we can find four miles of sidewalks that would really improve the flow around the town and, and advance the ball on that. So overall, I, I like it. I'm sure I'll have specific comments. I don't know how much, you know, how valuable it is for us to, or for me anyway, to try to, you know, tweak one thing or tweak one or another, or come up with one, because I can't, it's all kind of in the same ballpark. I do think from a process standpoint, I think formally to qualify as a master plan under the statute, it has to be adopted by the planning board. So I think at some point in the process, the planning board review should be there because I think that is something that does, and you would know better than me, but that unlocks grants and becomes an official townwide master plan as defined in the state statute. So those are kind of my general thoughts on, on what I, where I see this going. And, you know, but, but good job. And thank you for doing this. And I, I agree with Gus. I'm not prepared to vote on this at all tonight. And, and we can talk about what that would even mean for the rest of what we're voting for. But I think we should continue the discussion and, and see what we can do on that front. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mike. I see that Teresa James, Chair of the Planning Board, wants to comment?
Yeah, thanks. And I just wanted to continue that comment about the, the planning board and kind of our actions today. On January 4th, we actually took time to study the implementation plan in detail, calling out and looking through the various strategies and objectives and the recommended actions and had a full discussion on those. We had no significant revisions or changes to those. And to your point, you know, it's what's interesting is, you know, like one strategy or action, and there was a lot, and, and a lot is really focused on really that zoning review that was recommended in, in many different parts. And so the planning board definitely has, has one of its key goals to, to initiate and try to make steps towards a more comprehensive zoning review to address some of those objectives and items. So I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware that we have actually already begun such discussions.
That's great to hear. Thank you. Any more questions, comments? I guess we're all set then. Gus, did you have anything else you wanted to follow up on at this point?
Yeah, Pete, did you, did you have any, you're, you're the only one that hasn't asked questions or comments. I know you're on the committee, but is there?
Yeah, I was all part of the process, so.
So, so for me, then the, the the thing I said, let's defer to the end here, we kind of keep going and touching on it anyway, has to do with, okay, so where does this go from here? From my standpoint, when I, when I look through all of the detailed actions, as I mentioned before, one of the messages I took from this plan, if, if I wanted to feel good about it, is an awful lot of the things that are in this plan say, keep doing what you're already doing. From my view, what we ought to do next is this plan should be handed over to the lead agencies that are identified in the plan itself, or all the specific actions. We should hand that over to the lead groups that have responsibility for those actions to get their comments and endorsement of those actions, because basically we're, there are actions that are called out. Incidentally, Mike, to your point about goals, I don't, I don't think I have any issues around the goals that are here in this plan at the level of the goal. I do have some specific issues with some of the particular actions, but the biggest issue I had is I think an awful lot of the actions that are in here are actually describing stuff that we're doing. So the idea that we're putting the stuff that we're doing right now anyway into a 20-year master plan with the goal that says, just keep doing it. What happens is I can't find the stuff, it kind of just covers over the real stuff that we're saying the master plan is telling us to do, because 75%, I don't know, 60% or 75% of it is basically saying we're doing the right stuff. So I would say get all that stuff out of here so that we have a focus on what this master plan is really trying to push the town to do. Take those actions, let the lead organization that's responsible for that action in the plan review the actions that they're being assigned the lead for to get their confirmation or reactions. And based on that, refine this action list with a goal toward getting it more focused and specific. If we don't do that, then it's even worse than what Mike described. We have a, we have an ungainly bogged down document that has so many things that we're kind of doing every, anyway, that suddenly it doesn't become a driver of anything. It just kind of is this thing that's out there that meets an administrative requirement.
But can I, Gus, can I address that, though? I mean, I, I, at the risk of extending this further, I mean, I, I think the issue I would have with that is the, these things is describing that, and you may have to give some examples of the ones that, that you object to. I mean, the things that we're already doing aren't necessarily things that are going to continue of their own inertia unless we choose to continue doing them and working on them, right? So for example, one of the things that's in here is addressing some of these financial issues and reserves and capital and all the rest of it. I mean, if that's not, if, if we're going to pull it out of a master plan, to the extent the master plan is going to have salience going forward, which it ought to, if we pull it out of there, does that mean we're saying, well, it's just not that, that important, so we can move on to something else? And to me, if that's important and we're already doing it, but we're really just at, if it's a 20-year plan of doing it, we're at year one of doing it. And so I would think if it's something that's an important priority and important thing to achieve all of these things we'd like to do, we want it in the plan because we want it to be something that this is something we have to keep doing in order to get there, even though we've just started. Like, I mean, we're not, it's not as though we've finished the process and then all of these reserve accounts are fully funded and our capital is taken care of, and we've just started doing those things. And there are really three or four more steps that I think are important for us to achieve what the plan is trying to achieve. And it might take 10 years of commitment to continue in the discipline to do it. So while I would agree with you, if there's stuff that we've kind of already done and it won't take continued energy and continued effort and continued prioritization to keep doing them, something like that, something that's kind of, you said it and forget it, maybe that can come out of the plan. But for things that require us to keep at it and keep at the forefront, I think those absolutely should go in the master plan, even if we're already doing it.
So, so you picked a good example because that's where my head went right away, Mike. And I'm sitting there saying, first off, that's, that's an action of the Board of Selectmen around maintaining the fiscal responsibility of the town. I don't, I, I'll give you credit for, maybe Pete, you should be the one, but I think, Mike, you're the one that's been the driver of us being more proactive about getting in front of our, our long-range financial obligations. I'm pretty sure you didn't do that because you read the old master plan and saw something in there that said, we need to do that. And you suddenly said, oh, boy, the master plan tells us to do it. I'm saying that for something like that example, I agree with you that it's something you keep at, but it is a Board of Selectmen responsibility to guide the financial health of the town. And I have a hard time picturing how the selectmen of the future, if they make a decision that they don't want to do that anymore, having something in a master plan that says, well, that's what we said you need to keep doing, isn't going to influence things one way or the other. So that was a good example of one that I don't think belongs there.
But here, here's where I think that you're wrong about that. I mean, first of all, the master plan was from 1964, when I started looking at these long-term issues as updated in 1997. So it might have been great, but there wasn't, there wasn't a lot in there about this kind of fiscal stuff. But it's not just an action of the Board of Selectmen, as we know, every year when we go in the budgeting process. And maybe I would agree with you, if the Board of Selectmen set all the budgets for the town, set the tax rate, could decide what their, you know, this, this requires the town meeting, it requires the school committee, it requires the work committee, it requires the town staff and, 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 and town employees to do it. And I think part of the, to make this master plan useful is hopefully to have it be good enough and persuasive enough that future selecting will look at and say, you know, this is part of the plan we're already on. And so if we're not going to do this, we are consciously deviating from a plan we've adopted. Because I certainly hope that, that that issue in particular, which I have spent a lot of time on, and will continue, is still of interest to whoever is after us. And that this is not just, you know, a, a pet project of my own and we'll go back to something else thereafter. I think partially what a master plan should do is kind of write down, you know, not frozen in amber, but say, look, this is what we're trying to do. And this is how it relates to everything else. And that you pick up one of these particular policies, you pick up one of these particular, you know, policy documents, and it's not just sort of floating out there as something that applies, but it fits in with overall objectives. So to me, that's something that should be in a master plan because it's something we want to keep doing for the next 20 years. And that we, we need to continue to prioritize, which means, as we know, saying no to other stuff, right? If we're going to prioritize, and one of the issues why we got where we were, you know, three or four years ago, or four or five years ago, and I started looking at this, is that it was not prioritized. So when we were in the budget process and we were thinking about in the budget process, the process was not set up and, and nobody was focused on it, right? Nobody was thinking about it. So you kind of manage it year to year, see where you got, see, all right, we, we got through town meeting this year, budget's done, and then everybody kind of goes home for the summer. We pick it back up again. We have the doom and gloom speech in October. Here we are again, right? And so the idea with that is to provide a little bit of a longer-term perspective. And I think from a master planning standpoint, it's the same thing with its zoning, right? You're not going to do all the zoning in one year. But if the goal is to kind of increase some of these other housing alternatives, it's, it may be, it's almost certainly.
I'm not challenging, I'm not challenging zoning, Mike.
Right, or?
But you're, but the example of financial, I, I disagree with you. I think the place where that becomes codified is in the financial policies that the Board of Selectmen pass.
But the problem is that's only, that's only endorsed by the Board of Selectmen, right? I mean, the sense is you need town meeting, the town meeting is the appropriating body. Some of this is going to require either debt exclusion votes or otherwise votes of the populace. And I think from a, from a public standpoint on, on these financial issues, I think people, whether they like it, they may, they're never going to like it, never going to like the prospect of, of some of these costs or expenses. But I know for myself, I feel a lot better paying higher taxes for something if it's kind of part of a plan, right? It, it fits into something else. There's, there's a longer-term view. It's not just, darn it, we're short of money this year, so we got to go get more of it. And then we'll find out next year. And so I, I think.
We, we just disagree on that, Mike, because I, the project, I understand a project in the master plan that says, listen, park and rec, we need that. And then the, but the financial side of that, that's a policy. That's not a master plan.
Can I just chime in on, on one thing?
I think that's completely wrong, but.
Part of this, which was critical, was the very first step we did was an inventory of all of the things in town that were going on. Because honestly, for example, earlier, Gus, you asked about open space. There's actually an open space plan. There's a committee that went through and made recommendations there. Even, even the most knowledgeable person in town, and I'd say Bill Mazzaro, let's, let's call it what it is, right? Who, who knows everything, doesn't know everything. So part of this was to have in one place a current assessment of all of the documents, the housing production plan, the affordable housing, and some of it's in great shape. You know, and, and, and we should be proud of that. But to have in one place where we're starting from for the next 20 years that's in place, including finances and governance, and it, it is part of the plan to, to, to codify that, to capture it. It doesn't mean that that's what we're going to work on. But to know what the gap is, you have to at least start with a full assessment. And that was the very first thing that the, that the plan did, that anyone in town could go to one place and see all the good work. Many, you know, there's some amazing stuff that's been done by the town. At least we know where we're starting from and, and not sort of spinning our wheels trying to find out where these are. And that was a huge task to just pull everything together. So it, it doesn't guide the next 20 years, but it certainly gives us a, a current state, which is an important part of where you start planning, but.
And we have to, let me just add, and we have to acknowledge, you know, what the things the towns are, town is doing that, you know, if they weren't, we would acknowledge that you have to do those. And if you're trying to address this one issue in this area, then these are the things that you would do, right? And so that field's doing this, it's doing this, it's doing this, but it's not doing this. So it really is, it's a, it would, it'd be huge lapse in gap and, and information in the process that we didn't talk about all those things and acknowledge them and give credit to the town for doing them, frankly.
Let me, Jay, let me ask you a question. At the, at the detailed level of the action plan, how many specific actions are there across the board in this plan? Ballpark, order magnitude.
Hundred.
Okay. Now, Mike, have you looked at those hundred?
No.
So my point, so my point is, those hundred involve decisions, policies. There's, there's issues there around who has the lead on things that probably are incorrect. There's issues around priority, around what comes, interestingly enough, one of them, and I forget what it was, one of them was a number two priority for something that we're doing right now. And so there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of careful scrutiny. that those hundred or whatever, you know, hundred plus things need to be looked at to be sure. They're actually the decisions that we want in this master plan. I don't particularly think the three of us should be the ones that automatically pass judgment on all those. I think it might be appropriate to go, for instance, the sidewalk management plan that the master plan says we need to have, I'm pretty sure Mo already has that, and it's underway. And the idea that we want to continue to monitor, manage sidewalks for 20 years doesn't automatically, for me, translate into an action in a master plan that needs to be done when it's already being done.
I think you have.
Maybe Mo disagrees and he wants to keep it in, that's fine.
I think you have to look at this as a menu, right? And it's a menu of, of, of options that you, you know, in each one of these areas that you, of actions that you can take. And it's, it's the, it's the decision of the town now and the boards and the departments and, and your fiscal process and governance process to decide which ones are important, which ones can be implemented, when, how, by who. I mean, we give a framework for if it were done, this is probably who should take the lead. This is probably how you could fund it, or you'd have to identify funding. I mean, it's really not, we're not saying you have to do all these, you can do all these, we're not unrealistic about that. It's really, okay, what do we, where do we go from now, from here? I mean, I mean, certainly, we know we have a focus to be taking.
So my issue around a plan is a plan is what you're actually going to do. I understand with a, with a master plan, there may be things you're trying to.
But we can't, we can't tell you what to do. We can suggest things that you can do, and then that's your, your town's.
So who decides that you don't want to do something?
It's, it's the, you're, you're, the town does, you, 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 the department heads, the capital plan committee, I mean.
That tells me no one does, or we don't know. What I'm, what I'm getting, what I'm trying to do here, Jay, is I'm saying, right now, Mike has, I did, I didn't even look at all of the actions. I started looking at them and it was like, there were so many that I had questions about the specifics on the detailed level. I said, okay, I'm not going to, I'm not going to do this over all of these pages. There's like 50 pages of them. I'm not going to do that, and, and I shouldn't probably do that. What probably we should do is pass these actions in this plan onto whoever it is that we think has the, you know, that we, in this plan is saying, you have the lead for action on this, to make sure the people who have the lead actually think these are actions worth doing. Because to your point, you're saying, well, this is really a menu. And I'm saying, well, if it's a menu and we know there's some things on the menu that we're never going to order, get them off the menu so that the document is more effective.
You may today think that way, but you might not in the future. And there were different people, different people in place, so that's part of it as well, right? I mean, it's a 20-year plan and, and, you know, it's, it will evolve and it'll be updated too. But as of today, where things are.
If there's different people, it'll evolve and they can change the plan, I agree. I'm saying if there's stuff that we know today, based on the people who are responsible for doing it today, are saying this doesn't make any sense, or I've already done it, it shouldn't be in the plan.
Well, like I said, it's, it's, there are ideas for implementation and it's up to the town to, to implement what they think makes sense.
Hey, this is Teresa again. Do you want to speak to one of the recommended guidelines that, that came from discussions of having a townwide master plan implementation committee and what that would be?
Well, I mean, I did raise that a little bit before. I don't think we really fleshed out exactly what that looks like, but that could be a next step where we would help, you know, help the town and, and work with the departments to, to figure out what makes sense moving forward. I mean, if you want to elaborate on that, that's, that's all I got in my head right now.
You don't, you're not, right now, I'm not in favor of that. I like to put you straight out, I'm not in favor, and the reason is because basically we have people responsible for carrying these actions out, but all of a sudden there'll be this other committee that will be doing something to make sure they do it. And I, I, it completely undercuts the role of the committee. That's one selectman speaking. But what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to let this thing crystallize and focus to where I can actually say, can I see why that's even necessary? I don't, especially if I, if the, what we're saying here is it's a menu, you can do it or you don't need to do it. I have no idea what that implementation committee would even do.
Well, so Gus, I, 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 I think your very first comment about going to each of the committees, I mean, there are, there are, in the plan, it does designate who's responsible for carrying it out. I totally agree with that. And I think what Teresa said, if, if each of the committees, you know, the selectmen could request that each of the committees that would be in charge of, of implementing this should review their section of it and report back on, on their assessment of it. And, but I, I, I still would say, you know, the gap between what's in the master plan is an inventory item, even if we're acting on something, getting affirmation from the town that everyone agrees we should affirm it is worth putting a stake in the ground and saying, we did, you know, we, we, we checked it. So I, I mean, I agree, the rubber hits the road on what we do with this. And I think the most actionable item is what you suggested, that each of the committees and areas responsible for implementing it, review those sections and we provide them a, a summary, you know, by each of those areas so that they can, they can comment on it and, and, and have cats.
That's, to me, that's the next logical step.
And I, I would like to make one more comment because we talk about just what is, was documented in the plan, but coming before the board and especially the Board of Selectmen, are new initiatives and new changes. And Mike, you spoke to some of those, you know, we don't know what some of those are, and they come forth in that, and you guys mentioned it, that this is used as that kind of guideline, guidebook that says, and what can we do about our processes when things come forth that say, this is in support of goal X and strategy Y, which might be a different implementation strategy, but it helps support an initiative going forward. So I would challenge us that as we think and we experience processes with go, bringing things to our different boards that we consider the time and place for raising that up.
So I agree with Gus as well, that I think it makes sense to send this out to the different groups that are charged with implementation for their input. And so I think that, that we do have, I don't know about Mike, but we have at least two of us that agree that that makes sense. I also think beyond that, that it makes absolute sense to create a, some sort of implementation committee that's going to, going to follow the, up on this for the next 20 years to make sure that the plan doesn't just get buried.
Just to help me, so implementation to me means that, when I use that word, it means they're the ones who make sure stuff happens. If this is a committee that basically is, I'll call it the town's voice of conscience about progress we are or aren't making on the master plan. So it would be the committee that kind of views everything that's going on in town or every initiative that's going on and can provide sage advice on whether the, the approach that the town is taking is helping or hurting the master plan. So in essence, you're more monitoring the progress on the master plan as opposed to implementing things in the master plan, telling the committees that are really responsible for them what they need to do, than having, you know, having a reporting committee that kind of takes a look and tells us the state of the town's progress toward moving in the direction the master plan has called for. If that's something that we all think is going to be useful and that there's people who want to be on a committee that are just kind of keeping the scorecard, that's different. When I hear the word implementation, that definitely means something very specific to me. And it basically has to do with who's actually controlling what's going to happen here. If that's not what you mean by implementation, then you're meaning more like informational. Well, then if there's a good enough demand for it and there's people who want to do that, then that's different, that's a different thing.
Yeah, well, that's my understanding, that it's, it's really keeping it as, before the public, keeping it as an evergreen document, so it doesn't just sit on the shelf and, and focusing the town on, on the goals and, and the ideas in the master plan.
So in essence, they would become the stewards of the master, their real, their real role would be steward of the master plan as opposed to director of the actions called out in, in the master plan.
I'm sure as part of their work, they could try to implement, try to get people to implement things as well. If, if the, if the planning board hasn't done their zoning review, then they can, you know, get in touch with the planning board and say, this was a recommendation, we're, are you guys going to do this?
And then how will the planning board react to that?
We don't know.
Are they getting, are they getting direction, will they perceive, it's a good thing you heard, Teresa. Will they perceive that to be direction from an enforcement committee? Or is that simply a helpful committee that's kind of, you know, keeping the, keeping the schedule and saying, gee, are you guys going to be able to get to this zoning review? Are they advocating for something or are they merely overs, you know, observing and reporting back and offering helpful advice?
It, it's, it's probably a dynamic process. They may, they may advocate for some things, they may just report.
If it's a dynamic process, I see a problem because you're undercutting the authorities of the committees that they're involved with. That's my concern. Or depart, or town departments for that matter.
I think they're probably supporting, you know, I don't think they're, I don't think they have any really authority. It's really just to help usher in the process and, you know, just keep it forefront.
So if you called it a master planning stewardship committee, rather than an implementation committee, from my standpoint, just as one voice, then I would feel much more comfortable about it.
Yes, I'm just wondering, as a.
I'm just wa, I'm just waving the mic, son, over there, it's good.
Oh, yeah, we have a new member. Excellent.
I think Cynthia's been waiting to say something.
I, I guess my question is, what would you plan on doing with the input that comes back from the committees once you send out all the different plans that are there? And what sorts of questions would you be asking the committee? I'm just trying to think about what the next steps are, you know, in that the town had an opportunity to look at all of this, had an opportunity to comment, and many of the committees did take it upon themselves to comment on this. So just, I'm trying to figure out what the next steps are after that.
Well, what I would expect is feedback from the committees. Either the committees are going to say, everything that this master plan calls out that we should do, we are in total agreement with, we accept the responsibility for, and we think needs to be called out. My, my initial thinking, given that so many of these actions are things that we're already doing, that, you know, this is the debate that I just had with Mike, I, I don't see, I don't see a master plan being improved by adding tasks that are already ongoing, that people already see as part of their routine job. If they're doing it, I don't see the master plan being better off with us ju, just adding all of those ongoing activities into it. I would see a master plan should be the thing that calls out what we're really trying to do to move the town ahead. So it's more the incremental change actions that I find of, of being important, not embedding 20% of change actions in 80% of routine stuff that we're doing anyway. So I was expect, when I put it, when I came up with the recommendation, it was because I see these committees saying, yeah, you know, the, the one that really popped up to the top of my head was the sidewalk management plan, because I think Mo has been doing that for at least two years. And once you have a sidewalk management plan pulled together, you, maintaining a plan, I mean, why not, why not have them all, why not have the, the road repaving plan in here and the, and the, you know, snow plowing plan in here, because we have to do those all the time too. Once it becomes a routine thing about how we do business, I don't find it to be a net positive to put it in a master plan.
So Gus, I think that the sidewalks are a perfect example of the problem, which is that it's been handled on a very ad hoc basis. And it isn't, I mean, Mo has a contract out with a consultant now to develop a plan for the town so that it's starting to get data-driven, formalized. But in the past, it's just been, it's been just totally ad hoc.
Right, so the question is, do you really need to have a 20-year plan on something that Mo has already undertaken to put a plan in place that then will be something you just maintain? Does that really need to be cluttering up a master?
Well, but I think, not to get a sidetrack, I think what he has is a management plan for existing sidewalks. He does not have a plan for where and the cost where we build additional sidewalks. And I believe the comments in the master plan are not directed towards, we want to make sure we maintain our existing sidewalks, people want more sidewalks, and that's the big expense, and that is a 20-year plan.
Yeah, I think you.
Because I've been here a while, we've built like 200 feet of sidewalk in that time. So at that pace, we will hit what we're looking for in about 400 years.
And I think if you look at the plan and the recommendations, most of them are not do what you're doing now. Most of them are, we should, we should expand this, we should, you know, this should be do, this is a new, you know, a new step. This is, a lot of them are not, I think we're over-exaggerating them out that, that just do what we're doing now. If you look at, if you look at them, it's a lot of new things or different focus or what have you.
Laurel?
I think Laurel's been trying to.
I, I think that, you know, we're, we're forgetting a key word here, it's master plan. It isn't a department plan, it's a master plan of the entire town, and it's a 20-year master plan. There are things that are going to happen in year one, year five, 10 and 15, and it was also impacted by COVID. So some of these things, if we say we should continue doing it, yes, it's a compliment that we're doing, but we don't want to drop the ball and just stop doing it. So this is an overall picture, it's a master plan, not a department plan.
But Laurel, what I would say is that the things that we're doing right now, even if COVID caused us to pause on them, it's not the master plan that's going to have people pick that back up and keep going. What I'm getting at is I think a master plan that captures all of the activities that go on in town, including the, including the routine ongoing ones, or even short-term activities, clutters up the plan and it makes it hard to see what's actually important.
I would argue that it's not a master plan if it's, if it's, if it's limited and it's only new things. It's, it's a master plan, it's an inclusive plan of everything that we need to do to continue.
And there are some legal requirements on what has to be in there as well. I mean, yeah, I, I mean, again, I think we're getting caught up. There's an implementation plan, the action part of it, but a large part of this is an inventory of the things we're doing that align with those goals in one place, which we don't have today, so.
So let me take a run at it a different, let me take a run at it a different way. If you take all of the priority ones and you lay them all out, we're not going to do them all.
Can I make a suggestion on this? I think we have, you know, vetted and ventilated a lot of ideas on, on, at this point in this discussion. I do think, I'm, I'm in agreement with you, Pete and Gus, that we should send this out to the other committees. And then I think we all ought to look at, including the master planning committee members, the, the board members, look at those priority items, I haven't read through all of them. And if there's particular ones that we want to discuss, particular ones we think might be an issue, and maybe when we send it out to the committees, we ask them for input saying, look, focus on these items. Which ones do you think are really realistic, which ones maybe get re-prioritized? And then we can have a little more of a specific discussion on the implementation because, you know, some of the implementation is going to have to be done by, by town staff who are kind of under, ostensibly under our direction, or town committees that we appoint or, or otherwise, and that some are going to be with independently elected boards and committees. So I think that feedback on the implementation piece is helpful. I don't think it should be an invitation to sort of rewrite or revise the whole plan, but I think on those action steps, getting some input on that would be helpful and, and we can have a further discussion down the line. That, that, that would be my suggestion.
So I think that we seem to have agreement on that, so why don't we, why don't we do that? And then reconvene in a month or two and, and see what we get for, for input.
Sounds good.
Anything else from the members of the townwide master planning committee?
As, as, I'm an ad hoc member, advisory member, associate member. I just want to say thank you to all the volunteers on the committee for all the work they've done in the past 17 months. I don't think when anybody signed up to be on this committee, they intended on doing a master plan within a pandemic, which made it that much harder. And I know how hard you worked on Zoom to get our community forums done. And you always took my comments, which were typically 10 to 12 days late, so I appreciate it. So thank you for all of your work on this.
And I, I just want to say that I hadn't worked with Sarah on anything before, and, and I was hugely impressed. The town has very benefited to have Sarah as our town planner, so thank you very much, Sarah. Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you guys for coming.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next is, under our agenda is discussion, potential votes, COVID, anything on that, Chris?
I have a couple of things. So just wanted to give you a, a brief update. We'll have a cares update for you within the next couple of meetings. Obviously, with the new administration, things are changing on what is eligible under cares, what is not. So we are going to have to reallocate, it looks like, some of the expenses we made. It does look like it'll benefit for us if it goes forward, so we'll keep you updated on that. Just want to also quickly update you on the vaccination rollout. I know we talked about it at our last meeting. Needham is a vaccination site, but it is very limited. They are only receiving 100 doses of the. Needham is a vaccination site, but it is very limited. They are only receiving 100 doses of the vaccine a week. So they may not be able to open their clinics up, depending on what they get for their own residents. But Gillette is also opening, I believe Lieutenant Governor referred to it today as a mega vaccination site. I thought mass vaccination site was catchier, but they're going with mega vaccination site. And that will open up and we are going to work with the Board of Health and the Board of Health Agent. We're going to set up a meeting with Roberta to talk about registering our seniors in town who may not be comfortable making an appointment online because everything has to be done, obviously through that portal. So the Board of Health Agent is going to set up a program so we can make sure that our seniors are covered under that. And we can get them to Gillette if that's where they're going to be vaccinated. So we're moving forward on that slowly, but hopefully going forward. Nope. I think Roberta has a comment. Hi, Roberta.
Hi, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks for coming.
I spoke with the, the pharmacist at CBS in Medfield today, who has done our food clinics at the senior center. And she told me that, and she's going to get back to me to confirm that next Wednesday, CBS is going to be going live with offering the vaccine. And that I think it's, my notes are at work, but Monday or Tuesday, you can go on to CVS.com and do the same online sign up for the vaccine at CBS. She also said that she's going to send me the paperwork, which I would love to get permission to do this is to write, send an email to the corporate office and become a site for the vaccine. They're going to be giving the Moderna vaccine. And we had a very, two very successful food clinics this past year during COVID. And I thought that if it's possible and they're willing to use our building as a, you know, a, a site for the vaccine, I'd be more, I, I would love to do that because it's perfect location. The parking is great. You know, even parking at CBS is good, but it's nothing like what we have at the center. So I wanted to talk, I was going to talk to Christine, but since I heard you talking about this.
No, that's excellent. Actually, we have a Board of Health meeting early next week. So why don't we coordinate with Bridget, the Board of Health Agent, and we can talk about it then.
Okay. And I'll, I'll let you know what food, uh, get, when she gets back to me, the more details and if it's definite about next Wednesday.
Perfect.
Yep. Thank you. Okay.
Thanks, Roberta.
Yep, thank you.
Next item is the FY 2022 operating and capital budgets, Chris?
Yes. So I just want to, I know Nick, we sent you updated budgets today. We've had a couple of changes since we gave it to you last, for the last meeting. So I just want to go over kind of a 40,000 foot view of the budget tonight. We submitted our first draft in December to the warrant committee. We've had a few updates since then. I will let you know, we're getting more information as it comes in. So this is not, you know, in any way, shape, set in stone at this point. But as of tonight, overall, the town requests are currently a 2.71% increase. And the school increase is a 3.99%. Operationally, the town side budgets, it's actually a 0.75 operational increase. However, we have included a 2% cost of living increase for our non-union members and our department heads, a 2% merit. And we've also been asked by the Board of Health to include full-time funding for a public health nurse at 75,000. That's what pushes us to the 2.71% increase. So let me tell you what information we're still waiting for. We're waiting for our state aid number. Right now we're carrying in the budget as our fiscal year 21 level. We just heard at the Mass Municipal Association meeting last week, last week, that we can anticipate a three and a half percent increase in our unrestricted government aid. And our chapter 70 and additional federal stimulus money should be coming as well. We, it's funny, they actually announced that they'll have to run a special seminar for the chapter 70 and federal stimulus money. So it seems interesting how they're going to implement this for everybody to understand. So I will update you as soon as we attend that session. We're still waiting for information on unemployment. One of the wild cards on that will be the school department has had to hire additional staff this year due to COVID and how we're teaching hybrid and those that are teaching remotely. If those people do not come back for the school year, assuming we're back in person in the fall, which we all anticipate, what that will do to our unemployment budget. And so we're trying to work through exactly how to predict that. We're still waiting for our health insurance rates. Mass Municipal announced they had a maximum increase of 6.8. So we've dropped ours to 6.8. I believe we were carrying 8% in the health insurance budget. We're hoping that will come down further and we'll see some more cost savings in that. I will caution you in looking at this budget, that this does not include any police or fire contracts. We're currently in bargaining with them now. And our local receipts are conservative as we typically like to do. We're going to continue to review these. The financial team is meeting once a week. We'll continue to look at them. Obviously with the vaccination rollout, we're anticipating that we should see an increase in our local receipts and our restaurants throughout fiscal year 22. So we will keep looking at that. We also may need a change in our snow and ice budget. Normally, if I said that, I would jinx it, but I heard it snowing out now. So I, I don't think I could put the jinx on that. This budget also includes capital budget money. We have put that in the budget. In the past, we have left that out and talked about it at a later date. We've made the commitment through our financial policy to stop doing that. The capital budget committees identified a number of vehicles and equipment. We've discussed the possibility of borrowing to take advantage of the low cost interest rates. And we have a large number of items because we haven't addressed capital. So just as a reminder, in fiscal year 20, we did not fund a capital budget. And in fiscal, fiscal year 21, we only funded 162,000. And that was by leasing the fire truck and the police vehicles. So the goal this year is to create the capital stabilization fund. I'm sure you saw that on the list of articles that we sent. We are trying to do that within the existing funding sources that we have in our existing budget. We are not going to seek a capital stabilization fund override at this time. But again, the capital budget committee has not taken a final vote on this, but felt it was important. And Sharon, who's the rep from the warrant committee, felt it was important that we carry this amount of money in the capital budget upfront, rather than waiting till the end. So where are we today? We have a $2.1 million deficit. Our revenue is up 2% for fiscal year 22, we anticipate, but our overall budget expenditures are up 4%. This is an ongoing issue for us that we are, expenditures are far exceeding what our revenue is coming in. And obviously some of that is impacted by COVID. However, we've been talking about this for several years now that we have a structural problem in our budget. As I mentioned earlier, we're still waiting for some of those updated budgets. We're waiting for unemployment insurance. But we all know that that's not going to equal $2.1 million. We're going to have some cost savings in that. But we're going to have to figure out where we're going to come up with the 2.1 million. The last.
Christine, just a quick question. I'm looking, the charts you sent out, I'm seeing 2.3 million. Is that?
There was an update I sent out today. We're down to 2.1 based on the savings we saw from the health insurance and the retirement.
Okay, this one I got from the, I took this off the agenda packets on, on the website like an hour ago. So.
I'll also get an updated.
Okay, got it.
And that just, so the updated, the packet does include the update that was sent out today. It should be below what you're looking at, Gus. If you scroll down to the next packet, I added it in there and highlighted that updated.
Oh, okay. No, I took the one at the top of the list. Okay, okay, got it.
It's a, it's a little more positive. I just got you 200,000.
Okay, good.
So one of the issues, and I talked about this with the warrant committee last night, is the town departments took, on the town sides, we took a 4% reduction in our operating budgets last year. And with that type of reduction last year, we're not going to come up with a $2.1 million fine in our office supplies, our professional development. Those are all the things we've been cutting over the last two years. We need to decide what services and what programs and what employees we're going to have to address to meet this 2.1 million dollars. So one of the things I think we need to look at, and this is why I want you to, to read it and digest it, was the free cash memo that we sent out. So our free cash has been certified by the DOR at a little over $3.3 million. This is obviously higher than we normally have our free cash. I think our average over the last 10 years is just a little over 1.3 million. This is an anomaly. We don't anticipate this will happen again. And this is due to two reasons. One, we had a budget freeze. We had a hiring freeze. So our turnbacks are much greater than we would normally have. We also had two budgets, the health insurance budget and the police budget that were significantly underspent due to some changes in how we did staffing and our staffing levels in the police department. I think we need to make a decision on how this free cash is going to be used. And one of the recommendations in that memo, and what I think we need to do is use some of that free cash for funding this capital stabilization fund. But I think it's something we need to think about. We've done a really good job over the last two years of reducing the amount of free cash to offset the operating budget. But as you remember, last year, we did not meet our financial policy. We did not increase our OPEB. We did not put the money into stabilization. That has to be our priority this year. With the wastewater treatment plant, the new elementary school, the possibility of borrowing for capital budget, we have to be very cognizant of our bond rating and what it will cost us to go out to do those things. So I think meeting our financial policy and just discussing that in the townwide master plan process has to be the number one priority of this budget this year.
And so I, I will, I mean, my reaction, Chris, to the, to the memo and my thought on it is, you know, if 3.3 million is what we have, I think to meet the financial policy on free cash, that'd be about 1.8, 1.7. I think the whole delta between 1.7 and 3.3 should go to the capital, the stabilization and OPEB. And, and I think nothing else. I mean, I think we, we, you know, we try to meet the OPEB number, we try to meet the capital number. We may need to meet the capital number in part with other, you know, with levy money as well. And then whatever the balance is, if it's 500,000, 600,000 should all go into stabilization. And I think that would, you know, all of them are long-term expense accounts or all of them are long-term financial accounts. And I think if we just start, we just draw the line there. I, I think that's the responsible way to use it.
So we'll, we'll have for you at our next meeting, we'll have a full accounting of the reserve fund policy and we'll present that. We're obviously waiting for the few more pieces of information we're going to get this week. In particular, the state aid is important for us to know as we go forward. And the schools have their budget meeting on Thursday night as well. So at our next meeting, we'll have the reserve fund policy to review, to show you where we are.
Christine, the, given we, we aren't sure what all the COVID relief is going to be, with the numbers that we're looking at right now on our budget, if the COVID relief is, you know, significant, does that act, I'm trying to figure out, is all that COVID expense off, isolated out of this budget we're looking at? Or is it basically, there'll be some, I'm, I'm looking at the $2.1 million gap that we're trying to figure out how to fill in. I'm trying to say, okay, I, I don't think this is a good year for an override either.
Yeah.
So I'm just trying to understand what impact.
We're in the same boat, trying to understand exactly how that's coming to us. Our initial look at the money that was coming through the federal stimulus on December 31st. It looks like the town of Medfield is only, the school department is only getting 170,000 out of that stimulus that was decided at the end of December. We're not sure what additional money is going to come through on chapter 70. We know or have been told there'll be an increase over last year, but we don't know what to expect at this point. So we're supposed to have it by the end of the day tomorrow.
Okay. Okay.
So anything else on that then, Chris?
No, I just, as long as you're keeping up, I think we're actually on our fourth version of the warrant article. So I'll send out an, an update this evening. There's been a few that have been added.
Okay.
But we are currently up to 42 warrant articles.
All right.
And, and counting.
Forty-two.
Forty-two and counting.
Because people have too much time because of COVID. They're stuck. They just come up with ideas.
Too many ideas, huh?
I think that's it. Yeah, these idle minds.
So next we have action items, except revised exhibit for approved lease agreement with the new singular wireless PCS, which is AT&amp;T on the Mount Nebo. Apparently the plans that they, that we voted on were from 2017 rather than the current one. So we're going to vote on the current plans.
Sent out an email with a little bit info, but they, they had mistakenly sent a final lease packet with the wrong construction docs. They've since revised them. We've reviewed them on our end and it's a few antenna replacements, otherwise no changes. And just looking to swap out that lease exhibit with the new one.
Nick, your email said that we had reviewed them. I guess Dave Maxson had reviewed them, but they also had the singular and
T-Mobile.
Yeah, T-Mobile. It, it wasn't clear to me that they also were okay. There were no objections raised, right?
Yes, we've informed both parties that both, both carriers are making some slight changes. They're both well aware. And they're, they're, they have the space set up and everything set up for them both to make the changes that they want to do without impacting one another.
Okay.
So we have a motion then to approve?
I move that we approve the revised exhibit for the approved lease agreement with new singular wireless PCS LLC.
Second.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
And Mr. Mark, yes.
Our consent agenda is vacant. Our citizen comment is vacant. Anything on the town administrator updates beyond what you gave us, Chris?
Um, actually, I just wanted to thank Memo. They had invited me to their annual state of the town dinner last week. And it was great to, you know, see everybody and catch up with Memo. But it was actually even nicer just to see that even during this time and over Zoom, they were carrying on with their annual dinner. And you actually called ahead and picked up your meal and then everybody ate together over Zoom. So it was just nice to see our group still moving forward and, you know, doing their annual things. Although it was hard talking to a Zoom group full eating lo mein, but that's just my thing.
Hard to be the speaker then. You've got our next meeting dates is February 2nd and 16.
Correct. And then I think, and I apologize, I, I was hoping to have a calendar finished for you today. We're going to add in, especially during budget season, a third meeting a month, similar to what we did tonight, where we take on a topic that's going to take a bit longer time, although tonight took a little more time than I anticipated. But an idea or something we're talking about that'll take a little more time. So if there are department heads after reading this or reviewing the budget that you would like to see, I, I know Pete suggested having department heads in quarterly, similar to having Carrico in, Fire Chief Carrico last week. We can do that as well. But if there's anybody specific you'd like to talk to about their budget after reviewing the budget, let me know and we'll schedule them right away.
Okay.
And next week, Christine, is, is week when we're going to discuss the hospital RFP?
We're discussing the hospital RFP, yes. Yep. And then Water and Sewer is going to, I believe, planning to attend to talk about the water rate setting study as well, since they'll be here for that.
Okay. And with respect to the hospital RFP for next week, is, is the goal going to be, if possible, if we all agree with it to vote to issue it next week, or is next week sort of a initial discussion, then there may be a follow-up just to?
The thought, the thought was that next week would be the initial discussion. I mean, if, if the thing looks good to you guys and you want to approve it, that would be great. But from a schedule standpoint, the development committee was not, we're not on a schedule that requires an approval on the 2nd of February. It would be nice to have it on the 16th of February. If there's a third meeting in February, probably the, the intent was to try to issue the RFP in early March. So to the extent that we get past any concerns you or Pete have in time to issue the RFP in early March, then that fits the development committee's schedule.
Okay, selectmen reports, Mr. Murphy.
Don't have much more than that. The development committee is working on getting that RFP. And I actually should have sent Todd an email because we do not actually have a meeting unless, unless something's happened and I haven't seen it yet. We don't have a meeting scheduled between now and the second. I think, I think a lot of the inputs, everybody put the inputs in and Bev Gallo is doing the work to get it into a, you know, revised draft form. She's been doing a nice job. So I can't, I can't tell you whether the development committee is going to be meeting between now and next Tuesday. At this point, there's no meeting schedule that I'm aware of.
Mike, anything?
I have nothing at, at this point. I think we have, Christine already gave an update on the ongoing. We're still bargaining with the fire union and we've got, received a request from the police union to begin bargaining with them. And so at, at this point, there's, there's nothing to report. I think we're still optimistic. We'll have something to put on the warrant for, for both of them for this year's town meeting. But to be, to be determined.
I have a couple of things. First, I went to the MMA meeting virtually this year. Kind of disappointing actually is a way to, being with the people and talking to them is sort of one of the better parts of it, I have always thought. And that just, you didn't have that feel or it didn't work for me at least this year, but still you get a lot of information. So that was helpful. And, and some, actually some very inspiring speakers about, uh, about different topics. The Medfield Foundation Legacy Funds Community Board met last night and it, the, um. Up until now, the com- the Legacy Fund has been administered, uh. In it with a partnership with the Foundation for Metro West over in, and I guess it's in Natick, South Natick. And, uh, both parties have decided to, to, uh. End the relationship and the, uh, the Medfield Foundation is going to administer the Legacy Fund, funds going forward by itself. And then the last thing was that I just, I participated in a call today from some intern who's working with the town of Wayland on police policies. And, um, and just answered some questions about what's going on in Medfield on that topic. Um, and that's it for me. Informational, I see that Denise Garlick's having her annual report to the community on Thursday at seven. You can either see it on Medfield TV or sign up for, for her Zoom call.
Anything else? Just a note on that, you have to register ahead of time for that meeting. So, uh, just a heads up on that.
Well, I think you can watch it on the Medfield TV, which you wouldn't have to register for, but.
No, I can't, but in case you wanted to attend and, and have a discussion or have.
Yeah.
Questions, so.
Yep, the Zoom mi- meeting. Anything else? Are we ready to have dinner?
I, I would move that we adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Peterson.
Yep.
Mr. Murby.
I.
And Mr. Markucci.
I.